Good morning. I'll call this meeting of the Cartersville City Council to order. If you'll please stand for our invocation and then remain standing as members of the Cartersville High School Varsity Singers led by Jim Stanley will sing the National Anthem for us this morning.
Let us pray. God of grace, God of glory, give you thanks for you've ordered our paths. We acknowledge that we are blessed to live in this place and in this town. We ask your favor to be upon us, to guide us in all of our deliberations. Inspire the leaders with the decades to come, for the participants in Civic Youth Day stir up within them a vision for the future for themselves and for our country. Give them perseverance to seek the well-being of all persons. That our life together in unity and prosperity gives honor and glory to the creator of all. Amen.
Oh, there goes the I.S.O. ready.
I'm there.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light, what so brightly we held at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose bright stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight, or the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket red glare, the bonfers singing in air, it proved through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave, o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Laura, that was much better than you doing the play for the agents.
Thank you all.
Truly, just right.
Thank you again to Jim Stanley and the Cartersville High School Varsity Singers for kicking off Civic Youth Day for us here today. A day to spotlight the best and brightest of our community. We certainly got off to a good start. Anything that we do here is probably going to pale in comparison to what we just witnessed. But Ms. Keeling, if you'll please call the roll for us, please.
Carrie Hodge, Ward 1. Jay Step, Ward 2.
Here.
Louis Tonsmire, Ward 3.
Here.
Lindsay McDaniel, Ward 4.
Here.
Diane Tate, Ward 5.
Here.
Lori Pruitt, Ward 6.
Here.
Thank you. Connie, and as we'll start off with the swearing-in of our Civic Youth Day officials, we'll do two different ceremonies led by Ms. Keeling, our clerk, one for the city officials and one for the school board officials, correct? So I will turn the floor over to you.
If the city officials would come up first, please.
of my office to God in the use of this oath.
Amen.
Adieu.
Wow, that was quick.
Is that the school board you've got over?
You're going to match my counterparts.
I do solemnly swear that I will faithfully discharge the deeds devolving upon me as a member of the Cartersville Board, the best of the guilty and in importance of what shall to me appear for the best interests of the community and the cause of education and without fear labor, affection, reward, or hope thereof, so help to God, do you swear?
Before we go any further, now that the school board officials are all sworn in and official, you are going with Linda Benton, correct?
Yes.
Our school board chair.
The ones in this office have a separate board meeting.
Well, very good. Hopefully yours will go as smoothly as ours will. Give you all a minute to clear out. And as they do, I'm going to try to match as many of you all up as I can here. Try to do without my glasses on, too. I'm Matt Santini. I'm the mayor. That's what the nameplate says. Sidney Arthur, there you are. You're with me. This is council... You can read everybody. Louis Tonsmire, Diana Tate, Sam Grove's right there. Let's see. Chief Carter is right there. You're matched up with Lily Simpson. Okay, so you see Chief Carter right there. Adam, you're also with me. Mr. Harper. Laura Garcia, your council member decided to go on vacation and not be here today. That was a scheduled thing. Please don't take that personally. We'll match you up with the rest of the council members. You can stay here afterwards. Lauren Goss, you're with Councilman McDaniel. Deuce Jones, you are with Councilman Pruitt. Counselperson Pruitt, pardon me. Let's see. Jace Step is right there. Kelsey Lorenzoni? There you go. Very good. Caleb Smith is where. All right. You're with Tommy Sanders, who's our Public Works Director, who's hiding from you. Chelsea, you're with our city attorney Keith Lovell.
Actually, Chelsea is also going to be with Mr. Sanders.
Okay, thank you. Better served that way, Chelsea, trust me.
Yes, much better.
David Tillman, you're with Chief Culpepper. Chief Culpepper's right there. Greg Anderson's in the back. Miller Forrestal, he's in the blue standing right there. Randy Manino is right there. Colin Shea is right there. So you see Randy. And Brandon Meadows is right there. And you're with Dan Porta, who is right there. So everybody should have a...
A bunch of theirs.
...Dan's partner. So thank you for that. And we'll get on to the business of the city council meeting. Our first order of business is the approval of our council meeting minutes from our March 19 meeting. Council, you've had these minutes well in advance of tonight's meet... of today's meeting. And so any edits or corrections can be made now, and if there are none, a motion will be in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved unanimously. The first item we have is second reading of a zoning and annexation request. It's file number AZ-1501. Mr. Manino, if you'll get us started with that.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you noted, this is a second reading. This is for an annexation and zoning of what we call a donut hole annexation, where the property is completely surrounded by city jurisdiction. In that case, the city sponsors the actual action. Since the first reading, there have been no additions or changes. The property was properly posted and advertised, and the planning commission did recommend approval of this application for annexation and zoning to the R-20 residential zoning district. And with that, like I said, there were no changes since the first reading.
Okay. Thank you, Randy. Are there any questions for Mr. Manino at this point for the council? Thank you, sir. At this point, I'll open up a public hearing for the zoning portion of this request, AZ-15-01. Anybody wishing to step forward and speak for or against may do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the zoning portion of this public hearing. I'll open up a public hearing now for the annexation portion of this request, AZ-15-01. And again, anybody wishing to step forward and speak for or against this annexation can step forward and speak now. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing relative to the annexation portion of request AZ-15-01. And council, it is in your hands to handle the annexation portion of this request for either... for whatever action you wish to take.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. I'll now open up a... council will consider the zoning portion of this request, AZ-15-01.
Make a motion to approve the zoning. Second.
Got a motion to second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. City Manager Grove, you made an excellent point during that process. Would you share with the group your thoughts on this?
Sometimes these annexations take place, and it might be interesting for you, the city school folks, to know that sometimes they take place to get access to city schools. I don't know if that's the case on this one, but we do see this.
And there's also areas of our city that you may or may not know about that where you might have a city... somebody that's annexed into the city on one side, and their next-door neighbor may not be annexed into the city, be in the county. Their next-door neighbor may be in the city, and that's why, as Randy referred to them, as donut holes. It's actually a... it's exactly that. It's just an area where there's county and city where they overlap. It's kind of checkerboarded in some places. And so we have a program to help close up those checkerboards because it's easier for us to not have to figure out if somebody's in the city or the county. All right. Moving forward, we do have a... next application is file SU-15-01. Again, Mr. Manino, if you'll get us started on this.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. This is a use permit application at West End Common Shopping Center located on Henderson Drive. The use permit is to allow residential above some commercial tenant space, which is allowed in our ordinance as long as it goes through the public hearing process. Like the previous case, this is a second reading and was originally heard on March 19. It has been properly posted and advertised. There have been no additions or changes since the first reading, and the planning commission did recommend approval of this application.
Thank you, Randy. Any questions for Mr. Manino at this point?
Mayor, just one. Mr. Manino, what we're talking about today is the existing upstairs of the buildings. If we vote on this, does that also cover future additions going up?
It actually would, but he would have to go through the city administrative process for the review of permitting and so forth, because the building was actually designed... the back half of the shopping center actually was designed for two stories. The front half are single-story tenant spaces, so it would not work unless the buildings were reconstructed in the front. But again, in the back, back around where the steakhouse is, where the offices were placed upstairs, utilities and so forth were run upstairs, and there is existing office space that will be converted. So to do the rest of the center would require some major construction alterations.
So we're voting on an umbrella, but they would still have to go through the planning process again?
That is correct.
Any other questions for Randy at this time? Thank you, sir. And I'll open up a public hearing relative to case SU-15-01. Anybody wishing to step forward, speak for or against may do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. And council, it is at your discretion. How to proceed?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We have yet another item for Mr. Manino to handle this morning, ZMA-15-01.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. This is actual re-adoption of the official zoning map of the city of Cartersville. The new map is placed behind you at the first reading on March 19. It was down here on display, but we felt better it'd be out of the way back there. With this includes all the changes in annexation and zoning which occurred in the previous calendar year. Again, this is a second reading initially heard on March 19. Planning Commission did recommend approval of this application.
Okay. Any questions for Randy on this item?
Well, let me correct myself. It's not an application, a map amendment.
Map amendment. Okay. Any questions? Okay. Thank you, Randy. And one more time, I'll open up a public hearing for ZMA-15-01. Anybody wishing to step forward, speak for or against may do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. And council, it's now at your discretion. It's how you'd like to proceed.
Make a motion to approve the zoning map amendment?
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. The Randy Manino Show is over for the day. Mr. Grove, you have the next item, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. One of the expanding businesses in Cartersville is Aquafill. They have a location up off of Redcomb and a new location out on Friction Drive. They have asked the city council to rename a couple streets out there related to their new development, Quality Drive to Econile Drive, Friction Drive to Fiverr Drive. And we have done that at the former location and now they're being asked to do it at the new location. They do want on second reading for us to change the spelling of Fiverr from the European to the United States one, so that if council should choose to approve on second reading amendment to F-I-B-E-R as opposed to R-E, and I think we checked and should be able to get the signs in place for their big to-do in May. Those are the issues surrounding it. We've done it before. amended on second reading, get the right spelling, and it's recommended for your approval.
Okay. Thank you, sir. So council, you've got the recommendation. If you'll make that note if an amendment is forthcoming. Is there any discussion on the item?
Mayor, I apologize since I missed the last meeting. This doesn't affect any other businesses, the changing of the...
Absolutely not. We wouldn't have brought it to you. We checked all that. I have time. Yep.
Thank you. Make a motion to approve with the correction of the Americanized spelling.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Jones, you have the next item, please, sir.
Good morning. Would like to ask your approval of the purchase of a new PLC for the water treatment plant. As we discussed, this is kind of the brains of the operation up there. The current PLC we're using was installed in 1990. It's got quite a bit of age on it. It has reached its capacity for expansion, and we have other needs that we need to expand beyond those capabilities. So for age and various other reasons, we're looking to replace this piece of equipment. The issue at hand is we would prefer to sole-source this project for reasons we discussed earlier, but basically we have MR Systems, which is a vendor we use routinely for maintenance. They are intimately familiar with the controls and the logic that operates the water plant. And this system is going to have to be brought online in parallel while the old system is taken down. There cannot be a break in functionality. And we believe that it is well worth our while to use this company that already knows how the old system works to facilitate that smooth transition. So thus the request for sole sourcing. It is a budgeted project, our budgeted item. The price is at $55,582, which is just a tick over what we budgeted, but it is certainly a fair price, and we would recommend your approval.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Jones on this?
So when's the plan to make the change if it's approved?
We will actually coordinate that with both MR and with ourselves. Typically, what we will do is we... it will be a three-pronged answer. We will pick a time where it's most advantageous from demand on our system, their availability, and then our staff availability as well. So it's a difficult answer to nail down to a particular day, but those components will go into figuring that out.
Trying to pick a time where the least amount of impact on the water system if it...
Yeah, and we can shut the plan down. I mean, we can just absolutely suspend operations. Obviously, a time clock goes off. You fill the tanks up to give you your maximum flexibility. But there's a way to do this where we actually won't have to do that. And if we can avoid doing that, we will. But that's the plan B, if you want to call it that.
I wonder, and this is completely unrelated to that, as part of you doing this, are you comfortable with talking to council about what we're doing with the water line to Bush?
Sure.
Just as an additional item?
Absolutely.
Update them on...
Just where we stand on...
The challenge that we had testing it, maybe?
Yeah, sure. Beginning Tuesday of this week, we notified Anheuser that we have this large project going on that you're well aware of up on Highway 41, 411, where we're having to move our 36-inch and 24-inch water mains out of the way of the bridge and road improvements that are going on in that location. We've reached the stage of the project where we're somewhere around 20 some odd days out of where we will tie the new line into the existing portions. And what that requires is shutting down the 36-inch water main and 24-inch water main that feeds the entire north part of town. As a point of reference, that line has been in continuous operation for about 23 years. We've never turned it off. So it's uncharted territory for everybody. We did a test shutdown... attempted test shutdown Tuesday, had a problem with a valve, kind of typical. Went back at it yesterday, got the valve to work, but in the process stirred up a bunch of brown water where you're turning things off, it reverses flow in peripheral mains. There are a lot of things that we can guess at, but like I said, it's not something we have experience doing. It put some poor water quality in that pipe, which we flushed for hours yesterday, and then turned the valves back on, sent water up to Anheuser that's of lower quality than they're typically used to. And this was just the test shutdown. When the project actually takes place, we will be doing the exact same thing we did in the test shutdown, but we'll be draining almost a mile of 36-inch pipe, hundreds of thousands of gallons of water, and that pipe will likely be off for 24 hours possibly. So what we're doing in a meeting, really right after this one, is we're sitting down and beginning the planning, the very particular planning of how we're going to do this. And the goal of that planning is to make it less bad. It won't be like nothing happened, or oh, you know, I thought something was going to happen today. It is about making it less bad. There will be brown water. There will be issues with water quality in places we can't anticipate because we don't know what all changes shutting this main off is going to create.
And this will be to anybody on the north side of town, or just Anheuser-Busch, or we really don't know?
It will definitely be for customers north of the 41-411 interchange there where the work is happening. That's kind of the dividing line where all those customers on the north side of that will be on an island. We have one 5 million gallon tank that we'll be feeding them off of because they will be cut off from the water plant.
But they won't see any disruption in service?
They shouldn't see a break in service. The caveat to that would be, let's say, that the issue you get into with larger pipe is it's thin-walled, and if it deforms because of being buried, then the fittings you're trying to put onto it, it's kind of like trying to drive a square peg in a round hole, then the timeline just expands exponentially. There's where you get into a potential problem of if you can't put the pipe back together, obviously that's a problem.
Sure.
We take a lot of measures to account for that and to try to accommodate that, but there's no guarantee that we won't have a problem with it.
But the discolored water, there's not any concern about unsafe water making it...
No, even the discolored water...
Tell us what the brown color is.
Right. The color is just that. It's already in the pipe. But because of flow patterns and velocities that are operating under steady-state conditions, typically what it does is it lays in the bottom of the pipe.
It's mainly rust.
It's mainly rust. Yeah, it's oxidized iron. So no, it won't hurt you, but it will flat-destroy a load of white clothes, and it is... it can be a little... it can be a little disconcerting when it comes out of the tap, and you're accustomed to seeing that clear sparkling water.
Of course, we're doing this to get out of the way of the Highway 20 improvements, trying to make things better and improve the line and the road.
Yep, that's right.
So you're telling me you can drink rust?
You can. But again, I wouldn't... I'm not going to tell you I would stand up here and just chug a glass of mud. But right, that's the crazy thing. Yes, according to state drinking water law, it would meet the requirements to...
And I guess the public service piece of this, I mean, we'll give notifications before anything starts.
We'll do a call once we nail down a date, and we'll try to also contact the industries that we feel like are most likely to be impacted by this and sort of give them a heads-up of here's what we expect. Plan accordingly.
Okay. Thank you for that update. We'll go back to the PLC replacement that we're kind of similarly related, but kind of not related to this.
Right.
And is there any other questions relative to that? And if not, a motion for that would be in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Bob. Chief Carter, you have the next item, please, sir.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. We respectfully bring to you this morning eight new breathing apparatus that we're requesting to purchase. These new breathing apparatus will be placed on the new fire trucks that will be arriving here in June. The particular brand of breathing apparatus is brand-specific for the department so that we have consistency and efficiency and maintenance and also in use of the breathing apparatus. There are two authorized vendors for the Scott SCBA's. We did receive quotes from both of these vendors, the first one being American Safety and Firehouse, their total quote of $41,320. The second from Municipal Equipment Services, or MES, for a total price of $39,720. We are recommending the low bid with the MES of $39,720, which is $10,280 below our budgeted amount for this particular project within our current budget.
Okay. Any discussion on this item?
Just for the benefit of everybody in the room, we use these when we go into buildings that are...
These self-contained breathing apparatus, these are worn by the firefighters when they're entering hazardous atmosphere to provide them breathing air. They're good for approximately 45 minutes of breathing air, depending upon the workload for the individual.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. We do have two items to add to the agenda. Chair will entertain a motion to add those two items.
Salute.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Two items added. Mr. Lovell.
Mayor, these two items are, one, a management agreement, amendment to the management agreement, and amendment to the intergovernmental agreement for the Clarence Brown Conference Center to allow the space there to be leased to the Barto Cartersville Joint Development Authority, because the current agreements prohibit anyone besides the Cartersville Visitors Bureau from leasing that area. The county approved these agreements at their last meeting and are recommending that the city approve them. And then they'll be submitted to the respective joint development authority and Cartersville Visitors Bureau's governing bodies for their approval later in the month for an anticipated move around the end of the month.
Okay. Council, it's actually two different items. As Mr. Lovell pointed out, we can handle those in one motion if you so desire. Is there any questions or discussion about these items?
Make a motion to approve both.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion's carry unanimously. That is the end of our agenda items. Do we... can we get... and I apologize, usually we're up here and kind of available before the meetings... the meetings, we did have a closed session that kind of took us right up to our meeting time today. Who's in charge of this, who want to get up and talk a little bit?
Mr. Mayor, thank you for the opportunity, I'm Randall Trammell, I'm the CEO of the state YMCA of Georgia, and I just want to congratulate Barto County, the City of Cartersville, City of Adairsville for this. I was talking with some of my colleagues around the nation, and this civic youth day is celebrating its 59th year this year, and it is, if not the oldest, one of the oldest in the nation. So that's something that other cities, including Cincinnati, Ohio, and others around the country are taking note of and actually are starting similar programs, so you've got something up on some of these big boys in other cities. So thank you very much for always working with us and allowing us to teach students that democracy is not a spectator sport, and you guys provide a wonderful example for our students, and we thank you so much for that.
Thank you. The luncheon is when and where, just so that everybody in the room...
That's right, the luncheon is at the Civic Center, and we'll kick off at noon.
Not the conference center.
That's right.
Cartersville Civic Center.
That's right.
By the library, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Randall, appreciate that. Nobody applauded for us for the entire meeting, applauded for everybody else. Reminder that city offices, administrative offices will be closed tomorrow for Good Friday, did want to remind that, and you have, anybody else have something to add, like moonlight hikes or anything like that?
Yes, Mayor and Council and audience, we have our monthly moonlight hike this Saturday night, April the 4th, we'll be meeting at the West Trailhead at Pine Mountain at 7:15 and departing at 7:30. It should be a great night, great weather, and should be a good walk, invite everybody to come out. I would like to give an update on our trees at Pine, our trees at Dillinger Park, I know I had correspondence yesterday with Lori, the loggers are still logging, they haven't been able to work the last couple of weeks because of the rain and stuff, but they have taken several trees out adjacent to the park, but the trees that have been taken out are not on park property, they are on Dillinger Management's property, and after that's done, we'll just have to see what kind of, what kind of open area we have left, but the trees inside Dillinger Park, this was done because of pine beetle infestation around the park, but the trees inside the park are healthy and with no visible signs of any infestation there. If y'all remember back in 2003, we had this problem, and we took about 25 to 30 percent of our trees down as a preventive measure, and so that has helped us, so.
So again, just to reiterate, the timber operation that's going on out near Dillinger Park is not a city operation that is being done on Dillinger Park.
That is correct. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Anybody else?
Do we not have another meeting before this?
I guess we do.
Yes.
Okay.
Now, let me go ahead and announce it, because these young people are here.
Sure.
Folks want to announce the ATCO cleanup, it's the annual Ray Southern Memorial ATCO cleanup. He was our public works director for years and had a real heart for ATCO as many people in this city do. So it's April the 25th on a Saturday morning at 11 o'clock, and you know, if you just show up at 11 o'clock, you'll probably be out of there in an hour and a half. It's a great thing to do in that community, to help folks that are having trouble maybe in their yard or adjacent to their yards. It'd be great if you all could come, you would really enjoy it on Saturday morning.
Right. Does everybody know where they're going or who they're with? And if you don't, if you'll just come to the front of the room when we're done, and we'll match up with whomever. That's all the business, Chair Wiltshire, a motion to adjourn.
So am I.
Oh! Shut me. Get a harum for that guy.